Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on September 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marla, would you call the roll?
Johnlin Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Dwight Burford is going to lead an invocation and Councilman George Glover is going to be leading the pledge. Fair bait, please stand.
Will you pray with me? Oh beloved God our Father, we rejoice in the gift of your Son. Lifting up these who gather in council and deliberation for our community. We praise you Father for the opportunity to be in your presence and we pray that you'll bless these who deliberate that the constitutional laws of the land will be upheld and that they will offer in their service the camaraderie that comes of their deliberation. We pray for the community, for the young and old, for our guests who stay in our community in the various businesses and we pray that you'll watch over us and that you'll prosper us and that we would as a community thrive and serve you. We pray that your blessing will again be upon each one in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. And that brings us to awards or presentations and we're lucky enough we get to have some of that this evening.
We will be fortunate this evening to have a Zoom meeting with some people from WSU who are going to honor some of our staff who have completed an education program.
Okay. Greetings, City of Park City. I am Melissa Walker. I am the interim director of the Ugo Law School of Public Affairs. We offer a master's degree in public administration and a mini-MPA which two of your colleagues, Eric Minor and Zach Dig, participated in this past year. They were two of the 27 students.
I thought, continue.
During the, these sessions, there were 11 of them altogether. They're equivalent to a one semester course. Zach and Eric learned about human resource management, about budgeting, about collaboration, about all kinds of things related to local government. At the time that Eric started the program, I think he was, had just completed his first year as the Director of Public Works. And when Zach started the program, he was actually working in Public Works for Sedgwick County. And hopefully because of the class and they met each other, they spoke about an opportunity for Zach to work at Park City. So Sedgwick County's loss is Park City's gain. Way to go. That's one of the things that we hope happens in the mini-MPA, that students make connections with one another that last long after the program is done. It's a great opportunity to learn from subject matter experts about just about everything you need to know about local government. And Zach and Eric schooled us in the business of Public Works. There were a couple of other students in the class from Public Works. Thank you very much for educating us about water and about streets. We appreciate that. And hopefully you took away some lessons about HR budgeting and other things in between. So congratulations to both of you for completing successfully the mini-MPA. I believe that the facts are there with you now and they will be awarded. Congratulations to you both.
Congratulations, both of you.
Go ahead, Dana.
So thank you to WSU and Zach and Eric, would you come forward, please? And I would just like to echo the fact that we are very glad that they completed this program and we're very glad that we were able to bring an additional staff person here. And once again, Sedgwick County's loss was our gain and we appreciate our staff very much.
It's always exciting when we get to recognize those people within our tight knit group family that service our community. Next item on the agenda is public forum and we don't have anybody signed up to speak this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports and go to our city administrator, Sean Fox.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items to update you on tonight. Now that the Streets inventory has been completed, the mayor asked earlier staff to present various options to the council for our next meeting scheduled on September 22nd. The options that we're looking at or proposing are along the lines of three different options. The first one would be starting at the top of the list and just working our way down based on the priority. A second option would be selecting a larger project that fits within the amount budgeted for next year and then try and fit in as many smaller projects as we can afford. And then the third option is to try and do the most number of projects, the most bang for your bucks and scatter those throughout the city. It is important to note that next year for 2021, we have $250,000 budgeted for street repairs. Now, there is a certain fixed amount portion of that that is done for regular routine maintenance as far as crack filling potholes and everything, but Zach will be presenting that at the next council meeting. Earlier today, each council member was sent an electronic copy of the Streets inventory just so that you can look ahead and familiarize yourself for the next meeting. Item number two is just an announcement that tomorrow Sedgwick County will be conducting a COVID-19 mobile testing event in front of the old Atwood store. It's going to be tomorrow, September 9th, from 8:30 in the morning to 11:30. It's not a drive-up type, but rather a walk-up type COVID testing. And then finally, just a reminder, the Park City Fall Garage Sale is coming up the weekend, the last weekend of the month, September 26th. Depending on your questions, that's all I have, sir.
Melvin? Are we having Fall Fest this year?
We are having a reduced somewhat Fall Fest, yes, sir. The Community Relations Board is working on it.
Okay.
Tom?
I was going to say, the COVID thing that I read about earlier today said it was for first responders and related people or people with symptoms. Is that true?
They have not identified either a particular group or audience that they are preventing from coming or they specifically targeting, but yes, first responders are those that suspect that they have exposure and want to come, but it is open to the public.
Okay.
So they're not turning away anybody.
I didn't want people showing up that had no symptoms just to see if they...
No, sir.
Were there, okay.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
George? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to old business, item four, which is discuss and consider the employee compensation. Sean, I'll just kind of start this. So we had that last workshop where, you know, you can kind of put me on the spot where I had that worded as employee compensation and then it also led into some incentives around the police department. My intention behind that was that the 3% bump that got approved was across the entire city and I'm not sure that that was communicated well. John is the one that made the motion, so I called him, asked him what his intent was. We weren't synced up on that, so I thought it'd be a good idea to bring this back to the council to get clarification on the motion and what the council wants to do. Sean, you want to go ahead and coattail off of that?
Yes, sir. I was going to follow exactly what you had said. If I could go back and refresh our memories, after discussing newly proposed starting salaries and incentives for new uncertified police officers, then we started discussing incentives for all other police officers. I talked about and proposed adjusting the pay range up for all pay ranges, 6.75% within the police department and implementing, again, the council approved 3% pay raise effective September 1st. I did give a figure of $33,788 and that was for all the incentives that we had discussed and specifically mentioned all employees. But again, there may, it may not have been clear or understood at the time that I was talking about all employees, Public Works, admin, everyone included at the time. So it's just for clarification purposes, the $33,788 is the cost for the 3% pay raise for all employees between September 1st and the end of the year. If council wanted to go with police officers only, the cost is $12,199. And again, the recommendation from staff, myself, is to treat all the employees at that time.
So John, you made the motion. Ben seconded it, so come back to you on that.
So I guess I just want to kind of circle back a little bit on our time prior when we were doing budgeting and stuff. And it came back to where this kind of initially popped its head was when we were talking about the million dollars that was in the law enforcement fund or whatever it was that was kind of causing a problem in the budget. So this $12,000, I guess, does this still fall in line with what we needed to do with that or maybe that's a question for Dee, but am I confused on that?
If it was exceeding the current year budget at the end of the year, then yes, it would start whittling away at that amount that was from prior years. But if you recall, we're kind of looking at, you know, short of staff and so forth. So it would spend some of the extra to keep this year's from being as much adding to it. Does that make sense?
So yeah, this $12,000 would come out?
It's going to be charged against this year's budget. So if it put us over budget, then it would come out of the past buildup that we already had. If not, then it's going to be that much less that we will build up for the current year to add on to the past.
And we would fall in line with that second option.
Highly likely, yes.
Yes, because we've been short-staffed.
I'll just defer to the rest of the discussion then.
Tom?
I've just got a question. We went and gave some additional out-of-sequent raises this year. Would this include them too?
It's up to you.
Well, I'm just asking. We gave some compensation that I think was well out there.
All right, I'm just going to clear this up real quick. The council has already approved the budget for the 3% for next year.
Right.
Everybody.
Right.
What the request was that we proposed was to make that 3% effective September 1st this year.
Okay.
For the last four months of the year. Where I'm getting clarity, what myself, Sean, is recommending is that that is for all employees starting September 1st. The motion that was made from John's perspective was we were doing the police department from September to the end of the year. And that's what Ben seconded. I'm coming back for clarification on that motion. I'm asking that we include all employees September 1st through the end of the year.
You help me because I thought we were doing a 3% additional this year and then doing next year too, so.
No, this was starting that 3% September 1st.
So I guess I would ask you this. I feel like that was a prior meeting and we're now bringing it back up. You need a new motion?
We need clarification on that because the way I presented it and put it in there is for all employees, but when I called and asked you specifically about that, you looked at it as police department only.
I did.
We need to know because payroll. So that's why we're here, is to bring that up to make sure that we do what the council is expecting. And since because you and I were not on the same page, then I felt like the entire council needed to come back and hear this again so that we can make a decision and everybody is clear on what the motion was.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because I mean, last thing we want is everyone said we thought something different. As my understanding at the time that it was just the police department, I'm good with other, I just, it wasn't clear to me that that was the case. But I guess, I mean, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Well, I have one more. We can handle this by an amendment to that, correct?
All we just need to do is if the two people that made the motion would make a new motion and just make it clear that it's all staff and then let the council vote on it.
Okay.
It makes it pretty easy. Or you want to stay with what the existing motion was and we can just re-vote on that.
I also have another question and what we're doing is we're pulling next year's raise forward.
Yes. Jim?
I'll just weigh in on it. It seems appropriate to me to treat everybody fairly and do the raises across the board on September 1st, so. And we have a mechanism for paying for it and that makes sense. So anyway, that's my position on it.
Brandy?
Sean and I had talked prior to the meeting, so I understood that it was for across the board, all employees starting September 1st. But when we talked again, I realized that it did sound like it was probably just for the police department, but I'm in favor for all employees September 1st as well.
George?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I'm treating everyone the same across the board, so I'd be in favor of the 3% effective September 1st.
Tom?
I support it.
Yeah. Ben?
Yeah, I'm fine with that there. You know, I'm trying to look through it, some of our previous notes and we really didn't receive anything on that as far as in the form of having a packet available concerning employee compensation. So it's even hard to go back and look at what was specifically brought up because there's nothing presented to us. I would definitely appreciate those when we have special meetings to have some sort of packet to base it off of just other than a note saying we're going to have a special meeting that could have helped clarify some of this because I was definitely under the impression that this was only regarding police there. But I am in favor of it, so.
Would you happen to have a readback of that motion from that time?
If I may, the motion, the highlights that you won, the most concerning portion of it was the $10,000 incentive for hiring a certified police officer. So we wanted to clarify, when would that be paid out? Originally, it was proposed to pay it out $5,000 upon the first paycheck and $5,000 upon completing FOT. So we modified that, or I should say your motion modified that to pay $5,000 FOT and then $5,000 at the completion of probation, which is also misnomered because our police department doesn't really have a probation period like most other employees do. So, but we understood the reasoning behind it, that we didn't want to pay this right up at the front. So we have since kind of discussed it and talked about it and said $5,000 at FOT and $5,000 at the six-month point, which is normally what most people relate to probation time period. But that was the motion made.
Okay. I guess I would just make a motion that we include all employees in the previous motion made.
Okay. Ben?
Yeah, also part of that was to direct staff to find out what the cost would be in bachelor's degree, associate's degree for existing officers. In just two weeks have we been able to find that out?
Yes, sir. I do have those facts and figures if council would like them at this time. We end up, we have five police officers that have a degree. One of them has an associate's degree and the other five, well, three of them have a bachelor's degree and one has a master's degree. And we had indicated no additional for a master's degree. Then we have four with previous military experience. And if council were to extend the same incentive to the existing police officers, that would be an impact of $9,329.
I would ask that we consider that as part of the original or include it in there.
Are you meaning my motion?
Yes, sir.
No. Not right now. I think right now we're just doing all the compensation package for the rest of the city. I don't want to over confuse it.
Okay. Do you want to remove your second?
Yes.
Okay. Second to John. Brandy?
I'll second John's.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. And that motion is to approve the 3% raise for all employees beginning September 1st. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to new business, item five, which is discuss and consider a waiver of letter of credit for Winkley and Matts. And Kurt Miller's here for that this evening.
Hi, I'm here tonight to represent Jerry Winkley. He's doing the development on hydraulic just north of 45th Street. He's putting in storage units along there and he has a valid petition that's been submitted, well, two valid petitions, one for water and one for sewer to cover that property and the property of the north, which is, right now it's got a building, it's got a building on it and a house on the back of it. It's pretty well-developed already. Jerry's got his letters of credit together for these projects and he submitted those. And the property of the north doesn't apparently have a relationship with a bank where they can easily get a letter of credit. They've been trying to get one, but haven't been able to. So we're asking to have their letter of credit waived. Jerry's would still stay, the Winkley part, the undeveloped part, but the part that's developed, we were asking to have the requirement of their letter of credit be waived because, you know, the purpose of the letter of credit is to protect the city in case developer has troubles and it goes to a tax sale or something like that. But if it goes to a tax sale, there's already a pretty well-developed property where it would generate enough money to pay off the letter of credit or to pay off the taxes it would be owed on it. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You may have any questions?
I'm just, yeah, I've got questions. I'm just trying to think how to word them. Have we ever, have we ever waived a letter of credit requirement before?
Yes, sir.
We have.
Yes, sir. We've done it with at least one I know of a residential development where the builder came in and requested that of the city and the city waived the 35%. The 35%, Kirk and I have talked about this numerous times and it makes a lot more sense if you're talking green land that you're developing and you're concerned. Development goes in, improvements go in, but yet somebody hasn't bought the land to put their house on yet, so it hasn't been and the city's left holding the bag. In this particular case where the property, as Kirk has already said, is primarily developed, that's why it made sense to go ahead and request this.
Okay. In the past, the city has called in some letters of credit too.
Well, that's what's on my mind. I'm like, we leaned on them before and they've been extremely helpful.
Right.
Tom?
Well, I've got a question and I, I don't know if I saw it in your office or where we saw it. Maybe we'll get, give them a copy of it, but that plot there and you're talking about what the letter of credit would cover is just a fire line, isn't it?
There's also sanitary that'll be serving it.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay. I was thinking there was a fire line involved and Winkley had to put that in anyway, so.
Right. And it'll be shared between both properties. And letters of credit, you know, you require a letter of credit and it's 35% of the project cost. Then once 35% of the project's been developed, you release the letter of credit. Well, he's probably already got more than 35% of the property developed, which is another reason to waive it at this point.
Melvin?
I'll make a motion to approve the, to waive the letter of credit for Winkley Matts.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? John?
Yeah, the last comment kind of confused me. So we hold the letter of credit for 35% until he's 35% done.
Correct.
But he's already 35% done.
It could be viewed that way, yeah. I mean, 35% of the property, I would say, is developed. So really, we wouldn't probably even need to ask him for a letter of credit to start with. But the way it's normally done is you ask for letters of credit.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. That brings us to item six, which is discuss and consider approving the Kansas Department of Transportation offer to purchase the land in support of Project 235-87 KA 3232-02 for the Wichita North Junction. Sean?
Sir, staff have recently received an offer letter and there's a copy of it in your packet from KDOT to acquire 13,448 square feet of real property to use as right-of-way in support of the Wichita North Junction project. The basis of the offer is the current fair market value for the property established via the certified appraisal and reviewed by the state's reviewing appraisal. So it's been done twice in accordance with KSA 26-513. The location again is at the very tail end of Primrose Park, 13,548 square feet of Lot 13, Block A. The cost that they are offering is 40 cents per square foot. And if you, just for giggles, multiply that out by an acre, it comes out to just about $17,000 an acre, so it is a fair market estimate. The physical impact is it is an unbudgeted surplus, something that we had not planned on. And staff recommends approval and authorizing the mayor to execute the required documents to complete the sale or transfer of a portion of Primrose Park for right-of-way.
Does anybody have any questions? Tom?
I was going to make a motion, make a motion or move to approve the authorization, the mayor, to execute the required document to complete the sale transfer to the Kansas Department of Transportation a portion of Primrose Park property right-of-way for the value of $54.20.
Jim?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider approval of the Confluence scope of services and fee summary to assist the city in developing a conceptual master plan for a new downtown district. Sean?
Yes, sir. Okay, earlier this year, council, as we all know, purchased 48.05 acres adjacent to the city administration center with plans of developing it in the near to midterm future, however that's defined. In February and March, staff was in the process of coordinating and scheduling a one-day planning workshop, one that would involve key stakeholders and local area experts. The purpose of the workshop was to solicit inputs and ideas as well as outline the realistic possibilities of what would fit on the property. Ultimately, the plan was to develop and produce a conceptual concept or a brief report, something that could then be used to support and solicit a request for proposal from various developers. Unfortunately, COVID-19 necessitated that those plans be put on hold. Now that it is part of our normal everyday life and we're aware of ways to adequately mitigate those concerns and implement safeguards, staff is recommending that we proceed with plans to conduct that workshop. We've reached out to a couple of different places. Confluence is a Kansas city-based architectural, planning, and urban design firm that specializes in both facilitation as well as collaboration across the various disciplines. In your packet is an attached scope of services that outlines a one-day workshop or series of meetings where as council members, key community stakeholders, and local area
of meetings, where as council members, key community stakeholders and local area experts, be it real estate brokers, developers, engineers and architects, would engage in a series of discussions with the purpose to develop a conceptual master plan for the new town town district. It would have city and citizen input on the visions, the goals and the programming. The project would then also include the development of a vision for enhancing the sixty-first street corridor to create an effect, attractive entry experience coming into the community as far as new streetscape and identity and branding considerations. The deliverables called out in the contract are, include a site analysis and a conceptual master plan with color illustrations and a design narrative that could, again, then be used to support the publishing and advertising of a development RFP. It is an unbudgeted cost. Total cost projected is six thousand dollars and staff recommends funding from the general funds parks department using Primrose Park right-of-way that we just secured to help offset a major portion of the cost.
George, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Melvin?
You know, I'm not against this project, but it seems like we've got a lot of other projects we've started already. Jardine Park and sixty-first street. Could we kind of finish something up first or do you think or? Before we get something like this started?
Yes, sir, we can. I mean, no doubt about it. We expect at the next meeting that there's going to be bids and proposal presented as far as Jardine Park, concrete construction as well as asphalt. We've gone ahead and secured the land at the southern end of Jardine Park where the new fence, the right-of-way, so that we have entrance into there. But that one's going, yes, slow, be it that COVID kind of put a delay in that. Sixty-first street, engineering, we're right now in the middle and that would be the next thing that, the next item that we'll be talking about is continuing forward on the right-of-way acquisition for that particular project, so.
Is that the air cap drive? Where we, where we at on it?
No, air cap drive right now, sir. We do not have, we had put a submission into WAMPO and to KDOT for their cost share program and both of them have turned that down for this year's submission.
Well, I thought we talked and it was cheaper to do it on our own versus asking KDOT to kick in on that.
It is. It's a possibility to where council can go ahead and direct and we can put a petition forward to make those improvements and then do special assessments. And right now, that property is in the process of being purchased and that's one of the things that we're waiting for is for the new owner because that way the property would be, the petition would be supported by more than fifty percent of the property owners.
Okay. Have we got enough funds to finish Jardine Park up or? I know we set aside so much for that.
Well, to finish it up, that's, that's a hard term to define as to how, we had talked about originally it being a phased approach to where we would work on the master trail that's going through there right now that would be good for our connectivity plan. There was a total of ten different items that citizens came out and said, rank prioritize, this would be very good for us to do in the future. Do we have funds to do all ten things? No, sir, we do not. But we have the funds available to start with the program as far as the six-foot-wide walking trail from the north end to the south end, as well as the asphalt driveway creating at the, the new parking lot, so to speak.
I was just thinking, sell the parkland ought to go maybe towards parkland is kind of my way of thinking, but. Finish that up.
Sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jim?
I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think this, having something like this in hand or, or in the discussion going would be awful helpful for the marketing of our city for businesses that may be moving here and to help portray the, the future of what we have, have planned. I know, I hear what Melvin's saying about the costs and, you know, but I'm thinking of just the, the concept, having the conceptual plan going and basically we get started on this. Would, would that be correct that, you know, this would help you with marketing the city?
I, I think both of you bring up excellent points. The reason why I do think that it would be valuable to head down this path is, one, the council purchased the land with an intended purpose to develop it in the future. Now, however we define the future, that's up to the council. But we already have already had at least one or two different people that have come and said, I'm kind of interested in that. What's your vision? That's not my job is to create the vision and the job is for the council and the community to come up with the vision of what we want. Having that in place would be beneficial so that way when somebody does come along and say, I want to do something, does it fit into the plan and they could maybe help kickstart this? We had looked into various different options. We could sit there and create, facilitate a series of workshops, citizen involved and may take a year, year and a half to let them kind of divide or drive the bus, so to speak, to figure out. But this way, it was a way of taking those regional experts, those that have experienced local real estate brokers, developers, to not only sit there and kind of manage the expectations of what would actually fit on that property and should be successful, especially now after the last six months. It's a different environment that we live in. What could have been plausible back six months ago may not actually work in that location now. So let's listen to the local experts to kind of help define, given the fact that guidelines would be provided by council and key community stakeholders. That's why we kind of mentioned, you know, involve some of the members from the Chamber of Commerce, local groups to sit there and, and weigh in on that so that way everybody has some buy-in, so.
Yes. I could see the benefit of this, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
George?
Well, as far as this developing this plan, I'd, I'd like to see some good engineering on that. If, if, if we just do it willy-nilly, it's going to be a problem. I, I look at, at like at sixty-first and, and Independence, Hatton Drive, all those things running together. I think if we had some good engineering, we could avoid those heavy traffic areas like that with everybody coming together at once. So I, I think it'd be very wise to get some engineering.
Yes, sir.
And stuff in this plan.
And I don't, I don't want us to get off topic on this, but, you know, I feel the same way Melvin does and I know some other people do. But like Jim pointed out, you know, we have talked to the local company about a possible relocate. But we got to have some type of plan and to George's point, and I'll just come back to when we ran through the process of building this building. We didn't do it on the cheap. We took our time. We spent two years in planning to do that. Still had some hiccups along the way. But, you know, I definitely echo what George is. We need to have a good plan and I think we should start early on that. But I also am feeling a sense of restlessness that, one, we've been cautious and pent up for a while now because of the predicament that we've been in. It's why I came to Sean and said that I wanted something to look at on streets. I wanted to throw out three proposals. George had brought up some areas on sidewalks for the kids, schools back in session. I want to see bids on that. Brandy brought up some stuff about some sidewalks that were flooding out as well as George. I want to see us doing some stuff like that. We've been budgeting, we've been planning for some of that and now it's time to start doing some of those items. We went through that sidewalk plan a couple of years ago. I constantly field phone calls on when are we going to do something and I don't even care if we find one spot where we can link two things together and say we made some forward progress, but I want to see some forward progress. We've been in this folding pattern for now. We've budgeted, we've planned for it, it's time to execute. And I would, and I echo what, what Melvin has said. I know George has brought it up as well. And I want to see execution going forward in the next several council meetings on stuff. But this is part of executing to make sure that we have a plan in our back pocket.
Tom?
I was going to say, this is something you need to do upfront and it's going to be somewhat liquid, too. You may think you know what you want next week, but it may change as we go through the process, but we do need something out there so we don't go build something in the middle that nothing else fits around. And so, long-term, we need to get started on it and it's going to be a long process, but we got to get started sometime now is as good a time as any.
And, and that's kind of what George has brought up, you know, and we need to take our time, we need to start making some small steps and start formulating a plan and nothing may happen eighteen to twenty-four months from now. But we do have some small projects that need to be started within the next sixty to ninety days.
Ben?
I can understand because it's one of the things I hear, I've heard a lot of is plans started but not finished. And so I understand where, what Melvin is saying, even along the lines of a master plan that was developed for this area several years back and never really done much with. So I get the frustration from those that have, have talked about that, lived through that. I have not and as a citizen of, of Park City and as on the council have not lived through that. And I don't want to let the past, I don't want to say failures, that's not, that's not the right word, but the, the past define how we move forward. So using the six thousand dollars to begin to develop a plan that would hopefully do something with this forty-eight acres that we have surrounding us would be great. So I would make a motion to approve the Confluence Scope of Services and Fee Summary and authorize the mayor to execute a contract in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars to be paid out of the proceeds from the sale of Primrose Park right-of-way to offset the majority with the remaining amount from the general fund park department.
Tom, did you want a second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Go ahead.
On, on the part of the discussion we've been having here about doing sidewalks and stuff, we need to keep in mind that every year there's money left over at WAMPO that they're looking for ways to spend it. And if you've got your plan out there, you can get some money. So we could get some help with that. And then Federal Highways talked today about that a little bit and they look at next year's plan being since there's been nothing submitted and Federal Highways' plan closes September the thirtieth, that they probably will be doing the same thing next year as far as funding and stuff, so. But there's always residual money left over. It may be ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand or it could be a million that they're looking to spend it every year and a lot of it goes to sidewalks, so just need to be prepared.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that motion passes seven one. That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider approval of Land Acquisitions, Inc., Scope of Services and Fee Summary to Assist the City in Acquiring Necessary Right-of-Way for the sixty-first street north improvements. Sean?
Yes, sir. As council was briefed back in July, the sixty-first street north improvements design is now complete. The next steps involve utility relocation and acquisition of right-of-way and temporary easements. The project has a total of fifteen affected property owners, thirteen of them requiring temporary construction easement and eight needing permanent right-of-way takes. Due to the tight timeline established with the project, right now it's proposed to construction letting in February twenty-twenty-one and due to the changes in the law regarding the Uniform Act, staff is recommending consulting with Land Acquisitions, Inc. for the appraisal, negotiation and documentation of the fifteen properties. And again, here's an attached scope of service and fee summary, which outlines a not-to-exceed amount for all the affected parcels. Owners, it is noted that may elect to donate or dedicate their respective easement or right-of-way, which in turn would reduce the overall cost of the contract. The fees stated do not include condemnation services nor expert witnesses if that is required. It's to be paid out of capital funds for this project and staff recommends approval of the contract and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Brandy?
I don't have any questions, so I'll move to approve the LAI, LAI Scope of Service and Fee Summary and authorize the mayor to execute a contract in the amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to be paid out of the capital project fund.
Tom? I'm sorry. Jim?
I second that.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to governing body reports and I'm just going to start again with kind of what we already talked about. Over the next several meetings, you're going to see some stuff that's going to be coming from the staff that's going to go towards spending some of the money that we've budgeted for improvements in the city. And we will start with some of those items that have been voiced by the council and start bringing those back. So you will start seeing that going forward so we can start seeing some improvements made around the city. I think we've, we've set in a holding pattern for quite a while right now. I think everybody's getting restless, I know I am. So it's time to start getting back to work and living again. So that's what we're going to start doing. Jim? Start with you.
That's great to hear, but I have nothing to add.
Brandy?
I just want to tell Eric and Zach, congratulations on your Mini-MPA. I did the program five or six years ago and it's an awesome program. I learned a lot, made lots of connections with peers throughout the several cities that attend that, so congratulations again. And if any employees have the opportunity to do that, I would strongly encourage you to go do it. It's, it's a great opportunity and you have lots of networking opportunities doing it.
Okay. George?
I don't have much. I'd just like to say, I think we ought to pray for our country. I believe our country's in trouble and we need to pray for it. That's all I have.
Tom?
I don't have anything to add.
Melvin?
Yeah, it's good to see the BMX track going again. It's up and running great. I was down there a couple Saturdays ago and I seen a bunch of rollerbladers on the cement pond, I think they call it, that's the name of it. I got the tournaments going out there, so it's good to see some activity in the park there, so.
I was going to say, just to, I, I think we need to mention how well the BMX track is doing. Anybody that's drove by on the highway, the visibility of it is phenomenal with some of the improvements that have been made. I know they've been getting some dirt work done out there. I know Zach's been helping with that. The track is busy and the one thing I love is, and I've been discouraged with it for the past several years, is when you drive by, we have not once had to complain about the maintenance, the upkeep, the weeds growing. It is well-trimmed and manicured and those folks are doing a phenomenal job out there keeping the track up.
Sean?
And if I may, it's important to note that Zach has also been working with the, the folks that are working the BMX track and he is securing bids right now currently for some more work to be done on that. It was presented to Convention and Tourism Board at the last meeting and they're actually going to hold a special meeting on the fifteenth of this month so that they can look at making those improvements or at least making recommendations that will be coming to council again on the twenty-second. So looking for some of those projects to get going. There's another one that is in the works as well.
Okay. Melvin, did you have anything else?
No, those are it.
Okay. Ben?
Jamie and her group do a great job there at the track. Thursday marks nineteen years since one of the darkest days in my lifetime as an American, September eleventh, and I want to say a couple of things regarding that one. To our military men and women, thank you again. Your sacrifice, your service means so much. To our first responders, police officers, firemen, they lost several lives that day. Thank you to the, for your service, for your sacrifice, as well to the spouses, to the family members, thank you. I say it often, but I mean it often. Thank you all very much for all that you do. George kind of mentioned this a little bit, but we do right now live in such a divided country, whether it's right or left. Face masks, no face masks. So many things bide at us and really divide us as a country. And the reality is that we have a lot more in common than we have that differentiates us. And if we just take the time to listen, to have a good conversation with our neighbors, I was walked outside the other day and my next-door neighbor has a yard sign-up for a candidate that I don't agree with. And I joked with someone the other day, I said, well, maybe we won't be friends once I put my sign up. But the reality is, is that that's just a part of who we are. It, it, it highlights who we like or who we might vote for, but beyond that, we're still humans, we're still individuals there that can get together, that can, that can enjoy company and fellowship with each other and we don't have to be at each other. enjoy company and fellowship with each other and we don't have to be at each other's throats. We don't have to worry about whether it's blue lives, black lives, all lives. There's so many things that do divide us and I think it's time that maybe you and I just as, as citizens within our own little community would take the time to get to know our neighbors more, spend some more time with, with family and friends. It might start here, but it could end up changing our world. Thank you again, though, to our men and women who sacrificed to those lives, to the families who lost lives on September eleventh. Continued thoughts and prayers with you.
George?
Yeah, I just want to say, welcome for the kids that are coming back to school. I know it's been a long four or five months just being at home. Things are going to get better. Also with the things that we've got going on in this country, I think we're divisive, but I also think we're reunited, we're reunited in God's love. A thing to remember is, take a look at yourself first before you throw stones at your neighbor just to see where you're at with different things. We all have a lot of biases and things about how we perceive things. I would just express God's love to everyone, not just certain people, and just let them know that you love them, that you care about them and you show forgiveness towards others. Thank you.
Sean?
I have nothing. So, good meeting tonight, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ben?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero.